Okay, good morning. It's 8:30. I'll call the meeting of Tuesday, June 1st to order. Our board chair is having a medical procedure this morning, so will be gone and we will move forward in his absence. Looking for an approval of the agenda.
No move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries. Thank you. Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Steve, did we have any?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Thank you. Any citizens to be heard. Moving forward, we'll have our employee recognitions. Okay, Brenda Backland. Today, we're going to honor Brenda Backland, Administrative Assistant in the Auditor's Office, for 15 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County. Sheriff emptying. Mark, today this plaque is given to you in grateful recognition of the 20 years of service that you've dedicated to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I get the short straw since Commissioner Campbell's gone. Yeah. Mark, I just want to say on behalf of Clay County that we are so thankful to the commitment that you've shown to Clay County and from a person who's personally had to call 911 because we've needed help on the farm, you were the first person there and grabbed the hose to help put out the fire. And I think that we're fortunate that you're so able to respond to the community when they're in need. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark, I was just going to say too, one thing, when I get done with my 10 years Commissioner, I'm going to be proud to say that I was Commissioner while you were Sheriff. So, thank you for your service.
All right, Ryan Carey. All right, well, this plaque is presented today for 20 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. Make sure and give Ryan our thanks.
I'll do that. Thank you. So currently, Ryan, he's been at the Sheriff's Office now 20 years. He started in the Patrol Division. He was one of our canine handlers for a while. He has currently assigned our Court Security Division where he maintains the integrity of the court. And obviously, everybody that comes through here gets to see Ryan's smiling face. So, we appreciate Ryan's service for his 20 years and we thank him for everything that he does for us here.
Don Culp. Lot of... Don, this plaque is presented to you in grateful recognition of the 25 years of dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens and keeping the roads safe for us. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yeah. So, Don works out of the Georgetown District. He works really hard to keep up his district. He's a skilled blade man who will miss very much as he's retiring on July 6th. Congratulations to 25 years, Don.
He's going to skip out of the building. And Rory. Rory, this plaque is presented to you in grateful recognition of 25 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so very much as well.
Rory works out of the Felton District, which is a blend of Wooded River ground with several busy large farm areas south of Felton. Rory works hard, is very good at running the motor grader. He's a great employee. Comes to work every day, does his work and goes home. His quiet, hardworking demeanor is very much appreciated. Thanks for 25 years, Rory.
Thank you very much, everyone. Our next piece would be looking for an approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve the payment of bills.
A motion by Commissioner Gross to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of the minutes from May 18th, 2022. It says in the packet, but it would be 2021.
So, moved.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Ebinger to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item two, our update on COVID-19. Kathy McKay and Jamie Hennan. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for allowing us to come back. Commissioner Kaylee, did I give you a handout? I can't remember if I did. Okay. I was thinking I passed you by. Okay, so we have the report as of June 1st and cumulative cases in Clay County and Minnesota are not rising significantly for sure. That's been great. The deaths have remained stable in Clay County. We don't have any new deaths to report. Our active cases are at 46 now, so that's a pretty significant decline. Two weeks ago, they were 81. So, we're really seeing the number of active cases, which is really good news, are declining, as well as, as you can see, our 14-day case rate per 10,000. That's also on a significant decline as well. So, it's really, really great that people are getting their vaccinations and still trying to protect everyone by wearing their masks if they're not and doing the public health prevention things that we've talked about throughout the whole COVID. Our Clay County active cases, on the next page, you can see that adolescents are the ones that are at the highest number. The 10 to 14, we don't have vaccinations for that. We just started vaccinations for the 12 to 15-year-olds, so we're just getting those going in our community, but they have not had vaccinations like the rest of the population. The cumulative case age grade is the 20 to 24, which has been one of the highest cumulative cases as well. Hospitalizations are down across the state of Minnesota for COVID cases. We've only had a couple of hospitalizations down, of course, on the other side of the river as well. So, that's really great. And that's the statewide hospitalizations on the third page, which I already reported. So, the data's looking very good.
Great. Jamie?
So, looking at vaccine administration in Clay County and Minnesota, I just want to point out that there was a difference from the last report two weeks ago because they're looking at the population age 12 and over now, where it was 16 and over on the last report. But we've made some progress in the reporting from the North Dakota side as well. So, for Clay County, the individuals with one dose of vaccine is at 53%, and those who've completed the series is 48.2%. And then, you'll see the 12 to 15-year-old, there are 667 in that age group that have been vaccinated with one dose yet, and 455 of the 16 and 17-year-olds. So, we're seeing some progress with the students. And then also, basically, the, you know, our highest population is the 65-plus that have received, completed series as well. And then comparing that to the state data, statewide, Minnesota, there are at least one, people with at least one vaccine is at 16.2% of the population. And again, this is 12 and over. And then, those with the completed series at 55.1% and 12 and over. So, even though the, now we're looking at the total number of 12-year-olds and greater where it was 16 and over, the data that we were looking at previously. And then, just looking at the ZIP Code data, just to make it a little bit more confusing, this data is still based on the 16 and over population. So, it shows you the percentage of individuals by ZIP Code in Clay County that have been vaccinated, and then the number of individuals in that age group, 16 and over, remaining to be vaccinated. And then, looking at the doses that Clay County Public Health has administered, we are now at 14,524, and just 85 vaccines were administered last week. And then, we have the data for North Dakota at the bottom, just looking at Clay County percentages compared to Minnesota and the North Dakota data as well. And this data is 18 and over for Minnesota. So, all the data is a little bit confusing in how it's put together, but that's what we have from North Dakota. And then, the last page is the cumulative cases by ZIP Code and then the last, since the last report that we gave, and the doses there. And then, I will just talk a little bit about what we have planned this week so far. We had some, quite a few second doses, so we pushed that out last week in order to give people a week to register for the clinic. But we have a clinic scheduled for Friday from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m., and we are offering 40 Moderna vaccine. We have 50 Johnson &amp; Johnson, and then we have 24 Pfizer, and those are both first and second doses. And that's, well, we have a team meeting this week to talk about other plans for administration of vaccine. And we are officially back in the Family Service Center this week.
Great. Updates?
And then, I included the vault saliva testing information. And so, the week that they have, the last week was May 16th. So, they don't, they're a couple of weeks behind with their data, but you see the total number there of tests conducted were 276. So, we're really seeing a decrease in the number of testing. The week before, it was 403. So, we're seeing the numbers of testing going down. They do potentially have at least another month to be here, and then they'll determine based on what's going on in our community about, you know, if the cases are ramping up. We're seeing some changes. So, they'll continue at least for another month at that site.
Kathy, are the hours still the same at the saliva test?
You know, they said they were going to change the hours, but we have not seen that information sent to us yet about hours change. So, when they notify us about that, we'll be sure to post it.
Okay.
On the social media and our website as well.
Commissioner Kaylee has a question.
The Pfizer vaccine doses that we have, are those being saved for that teenage group or is it open for anybody?
So, for now, it's an open clinic. So, we do have the people that we've invited for the second dose have already registered. So, those slots are filled, but otherwise, it's an open clinic.
Any other questions?
All these children that are being vaccinated, I think they need a parent, do they need a parent's signature?
They do.
Do the child just go in and, so up to what, the age 18 or?
Up to the age of 18. And that is like all, any vaccines that we offer to children, we have to have parent consent. So, we have two ways to have them consent. When they register, they read the information and they sign that they've, you know, reviewed the emergency use authorization, but we also have a written consent that we have them complete for us as well.
Okay. Of course, now it's sort of a mute point as far as going into the schools to do it, but was that ever a plan? Or, of course, we never got there probably.
By the time that the age was announced, the schools were pretty busy in wrapping things up, but we made some, we had some conversations with them about summer school and then summer activities. And so, that's kind of what we have to talk about, what's convenient for the families and works well for the schools.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, there is, I know Commissioner Gross, you had asked or talked about in the past incentives. So, Minnesota's offering incentives now for those getting vaccinated. We won't be involved with that as far as submitting names, but individuals that get vaccinated can submit their names in for some of the incentives that are being offered across the state.
So, they get a free, the kids get a free drink then if they?
Hopefully, that's not it.
Any other questions? Well, it's really been a marathon, not a sprint. And I think that having you wait a week certainly was appropriate. I don't think that there's anything altered. I mean, major has happened to warrant you to come back on a weekly basis at this point still, Steve. So, continue with every other week until we decide further. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, our report and recommendation on disbursement from Compliance Fund Committee. Our recorder, Kimberly Savage. Oh, good morning.
Good morning, Board members. I'm here today to report on the Recorder's compliance. We were 100% compliant in 2020. With that complacency, we were able to then share our funds with other land record departments. That's what I'm here for today to get approval.
Kim, can you put the microphone a little closer?
I'm here today for approval to disperse those funds. It would be $105,000 total for the 2022 budget. We have $15,000 going to the tax system, $40,000 going to our corner remonumentation program, $37,350 to our information services, and $12,000, excuse me, $650 for our assessor's software maintenance for a total of $105,000. This is consistent with what we've done in years past. We just did a little bit of a minor tweak to the assessor software because they did have a price increase. So, I would need a motion to approve that.
Kim, could you tell, now, tax system maintenance, what does that mean?
The Auditor's Office has a fee that they have to pay to maintain their tax system on a yearly basis. And so, we help cover the funds of that because our office uses that as well. It enhances our recording process.
Okay. Then take the next one too. What's that one, Reece?
So, that is the contract with the county surveyor to document the different corners in the county.
Okay, all right. Very good.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Yes. I had the opportunity to attend the meeting where this was worked out, and Kimberly took her time to make me acquainted with the operation. There's a couple of things we want to keep in mind. I guess if you're going for the least of meeting qualifications, we could have gotten there with 90%, but we have 100% compliance coming out of an office that moved locations, that was engaged in a major process of digitalizing their records, all their records. And just, I was very impressed with the entire operation. I think we need to commend Kimberly for her management of the place. I think it's a great asset. The state limits how these funds can be spent, but she has stewarded the money well, and I'd like to make a motion that we accept these, this fund disbursement.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger. Commissioner Ebinger is that to approve the $105,000 expenses and approve the use of compliance funds for the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? I'll second the comments. Kim, you did a great job. And I think the one piece that Commissioner Ebinger failed to mention was that it was all in the middle of a pandemic. So, that was even more a testament to the work your department does. Thank you.
It's scary that that fades into the background now, but yes.
Yes. And because of the pandemic, the interest rates were lower, and we saw a huge increase in document recording during that time. So, my staff did really wonderful this last year, and I would like to thank them as well.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
One other thing that I would like to mention that we did bring to the Recorder Compliance Committee was discussion of the fees for my office. We're looking at doing a different fee schedule, but I'll bring that full schedule to you back at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you making sure that we're charging accurately. Item four, Justin Roberts, request to fill vacancy for a full-time correctional officer, assistant administrator for another month. Oh, my God.
Morning.
Good morning.
So, yes, I am back. We had another resignation recently. We have an employee that got a job opportunity to work with his family back in his hometown. He's in the midst of starting a family, so he jumped at that chance. He's been with us for right around three years now, so there will be a slight cost savings to the budget, but it is a budgeted position. Excuse me. And it is part of our staffing plan to fill this position with the Department of Corrections.
Okay. All right, thank you. Justin, we talked a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, about your staffing grid and making sure that you have adequate staffing to keep that in order without having to cut back our capacity. How are you feeling about that?
I'm a little concerned, even more so. I anticipate two more resignations within the coming weeks, to be perfectly honest with you. It's, it's a little concerning. However, we have, we conducted some interviews on Friday. I handed out two backgrounds. We're very pleased with the two applicants we interviewed last week. We have another interview tomorrow with a correction officer that's in a facility in western North Dakota, so I'm pretty excited about that as well. Recently, I had the sheriff add to the sheriff's office Facebook page our posting for job hiring. Not sure if it was part of that, but that next day, we received three applicants, which is, doesn't seem like a lot, but for us lately is a lot. So, I think I sent an email on Friday to HR to get those interviews scheduled. So, I'm confident that we're going to be able to fill the positions. It's just, it is worrisome with the volume, the number currently with this position that I'm here asking for. We're short full-time with the coming two. It could be six. So, not 100% that those two will come, but I'm pretty confident that we're going to see those two other people leave, so.
Justin, in terms of your applicant pool, are you just interviewing all of the applicants that you're getting at this point?
That's what we're doing at this point.
Be proactive.
Yeah.
And then, my other question before the board, maybe, the resignations, is it because of jobs elsewhere, work environment? Do we have issues we need to address?
I don't believe it's work environment. I've spoken, every one of the officers that have resigned have come and spoke with me personally in my office. Just let me know. They've had other job opportunities, whether it's being a police officer, which was one of their career goals. This one that gets to go back and work with his family and move back to his hometown. The other one that I'm anticipating, she's looking to start a family next year, and just having a shift schedule just isn't conducive of starting a family, which is totally understandable. We've kind of looked at the schedule a little bit to see if there's anything we can do with that. It's difficult just to be as fair as possible with all the staff. And then, the other one I anticipate having, he's planning to leave for something that he ultimately went to college for. And so, I think all of them that I've spoken to, it was a difficult decision that they made. They liked the jail. They liked the environment. They liked the atmosphere. It's just other opportunities have come up and other plans.
Thank you. Any board questions? Commissioner Ebinger?
Just an observation, and I've mentioned this in some of my prior reports, it is across the range of fields in public safety, dispatcher positions, correctional officer positions, and law enforcement positions right now are very, very difficult to fill, particularly in this part of the world. You know, we're competing with a lot of private employers that offer higher salaries on the front end, maybe not the long-term goals a lot of public service get. But I totally support you guys and encourage you to get a list put together. And, you know, we will do whatever we can to expedite the hiring process for you. But we have a very good correctional facility with good staff in it, and it's well-led. And I just want to express support for that because I've been in your position trying to get quality people into an organization when the job market is sort of, and we'll give you whatever support you need.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll make a motion to approve the application.
A motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the request.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Good luck, Justin.
Thank you. And I'd just like to add, Steve did forward on an email from Commissioner Kaylee about a job fair that's coming up that we are looking into as well through the Morehead Business Association. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Item five is a request to fill a vacancy for a full-time counselor or juvenile worker. We have James O'Donnell from West Central Juvenile Regional Center. Good morning, James.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here today to request to fill a vacancy in our non-secure unit. This individual is actually staying in the county. She accepted a job with Child Protections or Services.
Are you looking to see any cost savings?
It'd be minimal. It won't be any more expensive. It's in the budget. It'll be minimal, but sick vacation, comp, and all that just goes right over to Social Services.
A motion to approve?
A motion to approve the request from Commissioner Gross.
Second.
And the second, I do see somewhere that there's a backfill. Would you?
Yeah, if there's a backfill available, we have a few open positions, so it just depends on what we get. We have the same problem as Justin described, applicants and filling positions. And so, I don't know what kind of applicants we would get and how they would fall into our structure, so.
Do you have a list, oh, excuse me?
I was just seeing if your motion would reflect the backfill as well. And then, the second?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Do you have a list of people that are willing to work there, or are you putting out an application there?
We've, we put out in the paper, I believe, this last time, Jobs HQ, I think it was, other than the original ones. We're not getting the applicants we once used to. So, that's been, that's been difficult. I have called an advisory board meeting next Thursday to get some advisement on what's going on with our staffing issues and how we can do that and how we can build that. Decent timing, working on our 2022 budget, so see what avenues we have.
Your comments and Justin's comments reflect the same as what we're seeing in the community. There's a staffing shortage. Surely, there's a surplus of jobs that need good quality candidates. So, we need to be creative in how we recruit, and I think that with working with the pick, that can be accomplished. Any further discussion? A motion and a second to approve the request with backfill. All those in favor of the request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Thank you, James. Good luck. Six, accept grant in hiring an eligibility worker who will be funded under the grant. A Grant, our social service director, Rhonda Porter. Good morning, Rhonda.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I hate to tell James, but we're going to have another resignation in our child protection area, and we do tend to steal some from his department, unfortunately. But the gal that's resigning is actually a person that's been with us for about a year, but she did come from detention as well. So, unfortunately, our staff are kind of moving through our departments in the county. Okay, I am here today. If you recall, back in April, April 6th, I came to the board requesting permission to submit a grant to the State Department of Human Services for a grant. It's called the Clay Community Living Infrastructure Grant. And we've actually been receiving this grant since 2018, and this was a renewal. this grant since 2018, and this was a renewal. This is a partnership with Clay County HRA as well as our CAP agencies in our region, so CAP LP, Mahoubi Ottawa, and West Central Community Action. We did receive the grant funds. We didn't receive all of the funds that we were requesting, but the one piece that they did approve, we had included in the budget a full-time financial worker that would be employed by Clay County Social Services to support our housing support program. So I think it's important to note that whether we have these grant funds or not, we're obligated to administer the housing support program, and we do that now. But we've seen such a substantial growth in that program. In addition, we want to be able to serve as the expert in our region and offer support for our regional county partners as well, as well as the CAP agencies. So they did approve that position in in the budget. And so I I guess my request today is twofold. One is to accept the grant from the Department of Human Services as well as approval to then hire the full-time financial worker position. This is a two-year grant that starts July 1 of 2021, and it'll go for two years. So, you know, obviously, in the hiring process, we would consider those, the fact that it's limited in its scope for two years. But we do anticipate that these funds will continue to be available, and we would continue to apply for them if appropriate, so.
And I don't have a memo sheet on that. Was there a memo?
No, I apologize. I just got notification of this late Wednesday, and they were looking for a fairly quick turnaround time, so I did not get an information sheet submitted.
So approval of the request would be to accept the the position or accept the grant?
So maybe the first piece would be to accept the grant from the State Department of Human Services. The amount is for $584,155 for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the grant.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Gross to accept the grant and the amount that the director stated. Second. And a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Also, just a note to our partners, make sure and and thank them. You know, I know it's a partnership, and somebody's got to write the grant. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Okay, then the second piece would be to approve the eligibility worker?
Yes, for approve the eligibility worker position for the two years for the duration of the grant. The one thing I would like to note is, in the grant, we, I worked with Darren, and we submitted the salary and benefits at a step five, anticipating that we might have some internal interest in the position. So we we thought we would start it a little bit higher. So we wouldn't be bringing in a new person at that level. They would be starting at step one. But in case we had internal interest and that fit within those funds, we were wanting to maximize that. The one piece they did not approve that I put in the budget was a request for like a laptop and some equipment. They did not approve that, so that would be an additional county expense with the position. I don't anticipate it being too significant, given the equipment that we already have, but I did want to make that note.
So I might be a little confused. This is not a continuation of a grant that we've already been receiving for this position?
It is a continuation, however, this is a new piece to it. What we originally had in the other grant was, I want to say it was a five hours a week of a case aid that helped with this program. This year, we decided to build in a full position.
So did that case aid have a computer?
Yes, however, it's one of our office support specialists, and she was just working a bit out of class under this program, so we wouldn't be taking her equipment.
Commissioner Gross.
You said that you're looking at starting at level five possibly. So if I was a level one worker right now, if I took this position, I would, for two years, I would go up to level five. And after two years, I drop back to level one or two?
Nope. Nope, we would keep you at your same grade and step. We just would not use all of the funds. We would request DHS. If there were any funds left over that we didn't use out of budgeting for step five, we would request that they be utilized in another way within the grant. But no, if you're an existing employee, and if you're at, these positions are at grade 14, step two, and you wanted this caseload, you would just take this caseload, and you your pay would not change.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was in house one, okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Do you need a backfill on this if you do fill it internally?
Yes, thank you for for that reminder. I would appreciate the approval of a backfill. Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approved to hire for this position and include a backfill in that motion.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Ebinger to approve the request with backfill, a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Just, there are some pieces to this that feels a little, should have gone through pick. Definitely should have had a memo, just for future reference.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? The other piece that we typically do with grant-funded employees is just to make sure that the employee we hire knows that because it is grant-funded, not everything, obviously, we have to still do the work, but it's unknown if if the county will assume the total amount going forward if the grant is exhausted.
Yes, absolutely. We would make that clear.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Committee reports. District One, Jenna Kaylee.
Last week on Wednesday, Commissioner Ebinger and I went to the Morehead Business Association meeting. Joe Rasso, who's the president and CEO of Fargo Morehead Economic Development, presented on some of the work that they're doing to support businesses and grow businesses in our area. That presentation led to a pretty lengthy discussion at our table after the meeting about housing issues in the area. It was a good meeting. On Thursday, the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County held a special meeting to go over the professional service and lease agreement with the city of Morehead and vote to approve that. Then on Thursday, I had the CAP LP board meeting. We discussed diversity, equity, and inclusion in CAP LP, the presentation. And this work is going to be ongoing for the remainder of the year. We also looked at, there's been discussion about the purchase of a property in Belsley, and we reviewed mortgage options and voted how to proceed with that purchase. We did vote to proceed on which mortgage option to pursue. We also approved a number of grant applications and COLA increase for staff beginning July 21. That concludes my reports.
The only, really a meeting, but I attended the retreat last Tuesday that we had after our regular meeting. And it was just good to get together with everybody again and find out what their feelings are, how how things went, and how we are going to proceed. You know, if we do proceed, you know, bringing everybody back, you know, how's that going to look? Do we have to make some changes, or should we make some changes? And it was just a lot of good discussion, you know, and and sitting at the main number-one table, you know, it was really good, half the number-one group, so it's.
Number-one table. All right.
No, no, it was just, it was just good discussion, and I hope we came up with some plans as far as how we're going to proceed forward.
Thank you. District Five, Commissioner Ebinger.
I neglected an oversight last week to report that on the 20th, on Thursday, I virtually attended Lake Agassy Regional Library Board. We reviewed libraries endowment fund. There was really nothing in consequence there. Looked at the 2022 preliminary budget. It's the second draft. There'll be one more draft before the process is finalized. Looks like the total budget increase will be 3.3%, but the increase to signatories will be 0.5% because of spending that was not done in 2021. So it held the increase to a minimum for the membership. Looked at several policy updates, code of conduct, registration, circulation, and confidentiality and proprietary information, and made changes there as necessary. We're going to start having future meetings in person starting June 17. I also attended the retreat on the 25th. I was down at the bottom there with table five, but I was still pretty impressed with the people that are running our departments and some really good analysis of what worked and what didn't during the COVID. We took an unfortunate circumstance and turned it into a great opportunity to rethink how we do business. And I was, I was quite pleased with what I heard from the people there. And again, on the 26th, Commissioner Kaylee and I went to the MBA meeting. You have a good description of that and what what was covered there with the EDC Director, Joe. Diversion Authority finance meeting was later that day. The audit for the finance for the diversion authority will be ready in June. John Shockley had a pretty lengthy presentation, which I'm going to fast forward to the main board meeting since it was redundant. But we we had a number of resolutions that we approved, plus recommendations for MOUs as the project advances. Set June 23 for in-person meetings after that. Had a meeting Thursday, the 27th, with Sheriff Empting. Steve Larson was there. Commissioner Campbell was there. And the mayors of Dilworth, Glendon, Holly, and Barnesville were there. We discussed concerns with Red River Regional Dispatch Center. There are some issues that the mayors expressed and have expressed in the past about a lack of services given the rural Clay County. In addressing this from the start in January, it became apparent that Clay County needs its own designated console with a with a dispatcher. That was going to require a new dispatch center, and that process is underway. It's being worked at. We're looking at forming a public-private partnership that may expedite things as well as reduce the cost. It'll be a costly endeavor. We're going to have to invest into it. You know, I think our point of departure is to get an individual dispatcher who is there, and, you know, it'll allow more focus and concentration on the calls that come out of our county. We've gotten nothing but positive feedback from the other partners in the dispatch center. It's the North Dakota partners. They're working with us. Morehead is not identifying the same kind of problems, but they have an individual console. So we're going to have to work in getting the dispatch center big enough to staff it the way it needs to be. And that's going to be work in progress.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yeah.
I think that as a rural citizen, and I expressed earlier, who has called dispatch and had a response, I understand that there are concerns with response time. All of us get that. I think that the conversation, I appreciate both you and Commissioner Campbell having those discussions at a committee level, I think might be to the point where we need a presentation to this board, particularly, you know, if if we're talking new new dispatch center, surely, we've heard from rural mayors and citizens that are concerned too. But just to make sure that the the air is out there to what the plan is to addressing the concerns to improve service. And, you know, I think enough of us have been part of these conversations, but maybe not from the facts like you've gotten. So I think it might be appropriate to have a presentation.
I think that's reasonable. One of the, it's a nuanced thing for the public may not be aware, but the dispatch center is run by a board of authority that's comprised of police chiefs, sheriffs, fire chiefs, ex officio with FM ambulance. And they have they have the input and they have the control of things. However, when they develop a budget, it's got to go to all the different political entities for approval on the share of those entities. What we've always had happen is operational matters remain in the hands of those people on the Board of Governance. And they're the ones that the dispatch director works for. These complaints, and as my understanding, they've all been investigated. My experience as chief was you got a written report back along with attached audio of the calls coming in and dispatch whatever the relevant issue was. I've asked several times to the those on the Board of Governance if that's happening, and I've been told yes. I've not seen any of those reports. Our sheriff is the chair of that board. And ultimately, he has a responsibility of interacting with the the Dispatch Center Director and Assistant in in handling these. And I know he's gone forward with them. And the electeds don't have a direct role in that. Right now, what we're trying to do is generate a role where we can handle the financing, particularly the capital financing of this center. The operational matters are a function of the Board of Governance and the chair of that that board. So we really don't have any direct input on that, other than the fact that we're paying customers.
Well, and I I appreciate you laying that out. My concern is that if if partners in the agreement pull out and they're not contributing finances financing to it, that that would skew what the county needs to provide and and certainly would be a budget hindrance. To make sure that we provide the best service, we just probably should have those conversations.
I agree. And any partner that pulls out concerns me because that really jeopardizes the citizens that live in those communities. You need dispatch services, and we have a level of dispatch service here we couldn't afford if we weren't part of a partnership. There's a lot of particularly rural, when you look at the Northwest Emergency Communication Board that I'm on, and you listen to a lot of the participants, they're trying to figure out how to staff their PSAPs. They're trying to figure out how to pay for the software that's required now. There's a reluctance to get partnerships because most of these are run by a sheriff's department. But they're looking to get what we've already got. As far as financially, this is, this is really a no-brainer on how we do it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on on the Triple RDC and the meeting with mayors? We're going to have continuing meetings with them. The next day, well, I'll get to the, I'll get to the second meeting we had with Triple RDC, kind of had a sequence right now. The next day, Mayor Carlson has had a meeting set up with a group of us, again, to figure out what we're going to do to get a new dispatch center and how to pay for it. And it's the Minnesota side, as well, Minnesota side from the Board of Governance, which should be the the Morehead Police Chief, Morehead Fire Chief, our sheriff. We have Mayor Dartis from West Fargo attended the last meeting, Steve Larson, Michael Redlinger from Fargo, Dan Molly, and Mike Reitz from Morehead. And we discussed issues regarding new dispatch center. This is still something we're going to have to sit down and work with and figure out how we're going to pay. There is a public-private partnership we're trying to get to, and I really can't talk about that right now, but it is being worked at where it could be something of a at where it could be something of a cost savings. And we're continuing to meet as a group. We did have, among the Board of Governance group, we also had the Holly Fire Chief who represents, or Holly Police Chief who represents rural police departments in Minnesota, on the Minnesota side. So, we're working towards trying to come up with something that's going to meet everybody's needs. You know, primarily in looking, looking at this and having worked with the dispatch center for 12 years, at times being over the Finance Committee and at times I was the chair, I don't know how we could do anything other than get a designated console. And that's going to require a bigger facility. So, it's a matter of getting things in order. The complaints happen. My experience was they're usually followed up on. And if we need to get in here and look at it as a, as a commission, I'll be happy to recommend that, and we'll try and make that happen. I do have the last meeting I had in my report occurred on Thursday, the 27th. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, Thursday, the 27th, Metro Flood Diversion Authority, Board of Authority. We had an in-person meeting for the first time since I've been elected. Very productive meeting. The executive director report, the preferred P3 candidates, that process is just about completed, and we should be discussing the preferred candidate shortly. It's yet to be announced. John Shockley, again, brought resolutions forward, master indenture of trust, one, a refunding of, refunding of an improvement bond. Did bring forward a resolution that we accept the WIFIA loan. That is a $569 million loan. It is a 1% above treasury note bill, 45-year terms, no interest during construction. It's a very good loan, and it is the backbone of financing for this project. And that, we, we obviously voted to pass that, and all of those motions did pass. We have fee for fiscal authority, and then passed number of MOUs and agreements. Eric Dodd gave an update on property acquisition. There's still about 100 easements out there that they're having some issues on getting signed, but that work on that proceeds. And we, followed by an executive session on that meeting. And that completes my report.
One question on that dispatch center was Dilworth and Holly included in those discussions because they're.
Yes, I'm sorry. The Dilworth, the mayor of Dilworth was at the meeting with the mayors. If I neglected to mention that. The representative bodies, we, we keep them even between Minnesota and North Dakota. So, the representatives on the, on the Board of Governance be the Morehead Police Chief, Morehead Fire Chief, Clay County Sheriff, and a representative from rural law enforcement within Clay County. And that's a chief from Holly. We did that to keep the balance from the original composition of the Board of Governance when West Fargo was added. Initially, it was simply the Morehead and Fargo Fire Chief, Police Chief, Cass County, and Clay County sheriffs. I think that was it in the original composition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Last week, I, along with the rest of the board, attended the succession planning retreat. My thanks and gratitude go out to Darren and Steve and, and Mark Sloan for the preparation and, and making sure that we were able to have those conversations. Also, to, to staff and the departments that were all represented. I know it's a commitment of time, and, and not always is it fun to go to just another meeting, but really felt it was important for us to hear from departments what worked well, how CARES Act Fund dollars helped make their job better for servicing citizens, and then discussion on how we move forward. So, I look forward to continued conversations on, on those talking points, certainly well worth everyone's time. I attended the diversion authority land management committee meeting on the 26th. We passed a resolution on a Cass County FEMA properties, had updates on property acquisitions, the organic farmland conversation continues, and then updates from the Cass County Joint Water Resource Board and the MCC JPA. Thursday, I attended the solid waste advisory committee. We had discussion on landfill projects and an update on the fires that we've seen out at the landfill. Kirk and the team are continuing to look at ways to make sure that we're addressing that safely, keeping staff safe, but also concerns from the community are definitely valid. I, I think he said there are some lithium batteries that had ignited, looking at using some sort of cover to make sure that the smolder, or take the fires out that way instead of adding water to increase the leach aid issue that's out there. But good updates. Commissioner Campbell provided an update on PERAM, and then we had lengthy discussion from construction engineers on the resource recovery campus. As you all know, we acted on that last week, and we'll continue to have updates from construction engineers on that project moving forward. Directly following that meeting, we had a solid waste finance committee meeting to continue to look at ways to address budgeted items to help, help with the cost of the building. I think we're moving in the right direction, making sure that we look at, at fees to make sure that they're adequate to, to help pay for the facility based on use and need. And we'll have more of a detailed recommendation for this board coming out of that. And the only other item that I would note is the AMC district meetings that are on June 18th. We'll need to add to our upcoming agenda, our upcoming meetings. Colleen, please. That concludes my reports. Steve, do you have a report?
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, did participate in the management retreat. Again, just echo the thanks of our staff who attended, and also this board for their continued support and involvement with that. It's an important strategic session for, for us as a county to get an additional direction from, from you as commissioners for our administration and department heads to, to move forward. We took a number of, a number of actionable items out of that. That will be going back to Strive and, and very likely back before this board here in the next month or so. On the 26th, I met with Joe Olson on a series of county issues, also Darren Brooke, on a number of HR issues. That afternoon, I met with Kirk Rosenberg, construction engineers, and Matt Evans, Lori Johnson on the resource recovery facility. The following morning, I participated in the SWAC meeting that Commissioner Moja was covered already, and also the solid waste finance committee. That morning, I also met with Joe Olson, Brian Melton, in finalizing details of our storage building purchase. They're in the process now of conducting the environmental study as a part of that purchase. That afternoon, I met with Commissioner Campbell and Ebiger and Sheriff Empting in regards to the dispatch facility that's been covered in detail. And that afternoon, we also participated in the MCC JPA meeting where we heard about property acquisition updates, provided the board an update on the last written offer updates, a replacement housing, differential payment, and two task orders and a leaseback agreement. On the 28th, we met from representatives on the city of Morehead, Chief Backman, Chief Monroe. Sheriff Empting discussed dispatch center. And after that meeting, I did meet with Sheriff Empting. Would note on Thursday this week, here in this room, we'll be meeting with Congresswoman Fishbach from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. to talk about our county's needs. And just note, this morning, we did get a, an email that there'll be a drug court graduation tomorrow. The courts are still continuing to meet by Zoom, and so that is at 1:15 on Zoom. And I would note, our citizens probably have not noticed, but June 1st, it's June 1st, and this board had asked all remaining staff that had been out as part of the COVID return to work. And so, our, our, all of our staff will, will be back on campus as of today. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And Commissioner Campbell and I had had discussion, I forgot to mention it, when the sheriff was here during the recognition, but he wanted to relay his thankfulness to the sheriff for his dedicated service to Clay County as well. I, I think it can't go without noting, obviously, the Tuesday after Memorial Day certainly provides a weekend full of reflection to thank those for the courage and sacrifice that so many people have given to the United States. I, I know that, I'm grateful for the freedom that we have because of that. Are there any further items for the board?
Yeah, I was going to bring up a, this meeting we're having on Thursday. Are we going to get together? What kind of questions are we, is there a list of questions we want? There are concerns, or?
Yeah, I, I, my intent is to put, there's a kind of a format that we will probably follow. And if there's, if there are specific questions that you have that you'd like to ask, you know, they certainly would appreciate any, any heads up on that. Otherwise, if there, I can certainly provide some questions if you want, but if you have specific, specific questions, go from there.
Just to forward to Steve before then, and then I believe he can forward the questions to Ben Anderson, who's a staffer.
That's correct.
Anything else? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.